Regular meeting, March 6, 2025 at 7:06 PM. We've got an exciting night with our Fairview Middle School Wrestling Team, state champions. So we're excited that y'all are here tonight. I will mention some more things at Mayor's comments, but right now we'll call our meeting to order. Ms. Jones, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Roberts?
Present.
Commissioner Hall?
Present.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Present.
Vice Mayor McDonald? Mayor Anderson?
Present. Vice Mayor McDonald apologizes he is not able to be here tonight. He has a family engagement that he had to be at, so he wanted me to let everyone know that. Item number three on the agenda is prayer and pledge if everyone would stand. Dear Lord, I want to thank you so much for this community and our neighboring communities. And just, I just ask, Lord, that you bless us all. Those that are sick at home, just please be with them, be with Mr. Hall and all of our commissioners, as well as myself, please just instill in us and help us to make good decisions for our community and our surrounding neighbors. Thank you, Lord, for all the young people here tonight and letting us get to just, you know, recognize their great accomplishments. We just ask your blessings on our community and just be with each and every one of us and keep us all safe in Christ's name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its throne.
Item number four on the agenda is Mayor's comments. I just want to thank the middle school wrestling team for being here tonight, all your parents, coaches, principal, just everyone here to come out and recognize your great accomplishment. And what an exciting night to have our Senator Jack Johnson here and our state representative, Tennessee State Representative Lee Reeves here to help us recognize you and congratulate you on your achievement. I do want to mention that this is a business meeting. If, you know, I just want everyone to know that we have our officers here for a reason to keep us all safe. We want everyone to be courteous and respectful. And I'm just gonna put this out as a first warning that if you're not, they're gonna be happy to escort you out. So let's just have a great meeting and just thank you all for being here, here and at home. Before we approve the agenda, I would like to add or ask to be added item 11G, which will be to allow the city manager, Tom Darty, to start the process to secure the property in Lyles, in Lyles, Tennessee for our police training facility. Also, I would like to defer to a workshop items F1, 2, 3, 4, and 6. We will continue with F5. That would be my motion.
Second.
Good? Okay, Ms. Jones?
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
The approval of the agenda is amended. Item 5 is approved, 5-0, 4-0, sorry, 4-0. Item number 6 is citizens' comments. If you will come to the podium, state your name and if you live in the county or the city, please.
There's one tonight, Mayor, Anthony Vincent.
Mr. Anthony Vincent.
I'm Anthony Vincent. I live at 7935 Fernvale Road in Fernvale. And I like to state my opposition to the property. I forget the number again, I haven't got it in front of me right now, that's, wants to be annexed into the city. Because I think that Mrs. Brenton has two sets of, two properties up there. The first property, he wants annexed into the city because it borders the city. And once that property gets annexed into the city, he has a second property that's further out into Fernvale that touches that first property. And once he annexes that first property, he will be able to annex the second property and move further into Fairview. And right now, we really have a nice community and we, we don't want a bunch of buildings going up there and traffic on the roads. He, he has plans, I believe, to make that second piece of property, a convention center where he would hold events. And that would produce a lot of traffic going up and down that Little Caney Fork. I'm in opposition to that. I look right out at that property from my front porch. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 7 is public announcements, awards and recognition. 7A, city events, Mr. Ross.
Good evening, Mayor, Board. Just want to inform everyone that we have a message alerting system. Simply text FV ALERTS to 88877. Again, that's FV ALERTS to 88877. For the month of February, we sent out 17 alerts throughout the community. We currently have 3,156 subscribers for text message, 1,773 for email, and 267 for voice. And just to go over a couple of the events, the next event that we have going on is the Easter egg hunt at Bowie Nature Park on April the 12th, and then the Arts and Crafts Fair at Bowie Nature Park. Next slide, please. We're currently taking sponsors for the July 3 event. This is gonna be our 14th celebration of Independence Day here at City Hall. We currently have several sponsors, but this is a free event for the community, live music throughout the day, food trucks, bounce houses, and of course, the fireworks show. Our main acts are Rubik's Groove and Colby Oakley and Brian Ray. Colby and Brian, they both live here in the, in the community, and Rubik's Groove, they're from Williamson County. And that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
And just to add to that, sponsorships, if, if I were someone who was sponsoring, I'd want to do this because we had 29,000 people show up at our July 3 event last year when we only have 10,000 to 12,000 in our community. So that just goes to show you how many people we draw from the surrounding area and your businesses will all be, you know, you'll be able to advertise those. So it's a great, a great way to advertise your business and also provide a free event to our community. And thank you, Richard, so much. You do such a great job putting these events together. We really appreciate you. Anything from the board? Okay. Item 7B, public announcements. Stephanie Tillman with Transportation Management Association and Kel McDowell with Williamson Inc. and also Transportation Management Association. We would like to hear from you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. I'm Stephanie Tillman with the Transportation Management Association. This is an opportunity to just provide you with an overview of our services and our mission and how we can be of service to you. Part of my role as Business Development Director is to raise awareness in the communities that we serve. The TMA was established in 1988. We've been serving 14 counties in Middle Tennessee for over 35 years. In a condensed version, our mission is to provide innovative transportation solutions for Middle Tennessee, those that are multimodal in solution, those that are environmentally friendly, and I work with employers and communities and residents on their transportation needs. We have at the TMA long partnerships, not only with the Williamson Inc. Chamber, and Kel is a member of the TMA Board, so thank you for coming with me this evening. And also, we have partnerships with the Federal Transit Administration, with TDOT and the GNRC, and we are associated with the Transit Alliance of Middle Tennessee, the Tennessee Public Transportation Association, Tennessee Clean Fuels, as well as other key chambers within the counties that we serve. And I appreciate so much that this two-page information sheet on our TDM solutions was included in your packet tonight. There are just a couple of items that I wanted to point out that you may feel could be of service to your community. One is our ride-sharing matching services for van pooling, for car pooling, for individuals that have transportation challenges that are dependent on public transportation services. We also support the Guaranteed Ride Home Program for WeGo as well as for the Van Star Van Pooling Program, and we manage and operate the Franklin Transit Authority on behalf of the City of Franklin. We are finding, certainly as we have growth within Middle Tennessee, that our traffic congestion is increasing. Also recently, just within the last three to six months, we're seeing with return-to-work mandates that more individuals who have been working remotely or hybrid are now going back to the office. And so we're able to help with some of those challenges and some of those services. So Kel, I'm not sure if you wanted to say a few words in conclusion. Really, I'd just like to be a service to the city. Think of me as an educator, an advocate, and a connector, and here for services, resources, and TDM strategies, and would welcome an opportunity to have further discussions moving forward.
Just, Stephanie covered it all, but thank you all for letting us join tonight.
Any questions from the board? We look forward to getting together with you and finding out what you're offering and services that Fairview could take advantage of. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Item 7C is recognition. Fairview Middle School Wrestling Team. And I'm gonna turn this over to Commissioner Buffalini.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, everybody, for coming here tonight. This is big for our wrestling team and for our community as well. So I did want to introduce two very special people that are here tonight to help us with the proclamation from our state of Tennessee to Fairview Middle School Wrestling Team. Our Senator Jack Johnson is with us tonight, who has the presentation as well, with our state representative, Lee Reeves. So ladies and gentlemen, please give him a big round of applause for our state representative and state senator. Also with us, with our team, is Coach Mike Mitchell. He's with us tonight as well. Our athletic director, Joseph Brown, and our school principal, Laura Hall. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner and Mayor and Board. I appreciate that very much. My name is Lee Reeves. I am your Tennessee State Representative in District 65. Mayor, I'm gonna try not to be too unruly up here and test Fairview's finest, but I think these, this wrestling team could probably do some, some work, too. I'm gonna read the proclamation that the state has issued, and then I think State Senator Jack Johnson's gonna say a few words, if that's okay with you. The proclamation says, whereas it is fitting that we salute those student athletes who, through their extraordinary efforts, have distinguished themselves as true champions of whom we can all be proud. And whereas one such exemplary group of young athletes in the Fairview Middle School Wrestling Team, whose members have proven themselves to be the fiercest of competitors by winning the Tennessee Middle School Athletic Association Class A State Championship, the first state championship in the school's history. And whereas the Falcons defeated East Nashville in the title match by a score of 60 to 29, wow, that is really impressive. Claiming their hard-fought bout with a display of fierce determination and athletic skill exhibited by every team member. And whereas on their march to the state tournament, Fairview Middle finished their regular season undefeated at 12 to 0 and won both the regional and sectional tournaments. And whereas, the members of this state champion squad are Declan McGuire, Keaton Duff, Zarek Blower, I'm gonna go with Blower, Colton Prylop, Camden Moore, Jackson Lemmings, Nathan Stevens, Gavin Lawrence, David Pope, Roman Neal, Elijah Hall, Catherine Kobel, Seth Matson, Riley Moore, Lucien Mugnier, does that sound right? Okay, all right. Mae Deegan, Emmett Sutton, Terry Green, Scarlett Berwick, Hank Murray, Lorelei Murray, Lucas Schrader, Kason Penning, Julius Carter, Landon Pitts, Grayson Holder, Reese Swiget, and Conway Greensway. I hope I did okay with those names. Whereas this championship season may not have been possible without the stellar leadership and support of head coach Mike Mitchell and assistant coach Riley Bennett. And whereas the members of the Fairview Middle School Wrestling Team epitomize all that is good in today's student athletes, as they have achieved a premier level of success and competition while exhibiting the highest degree of character in all aspects of life. And whereas the perseverance, determination, work ethic, and talent of this group of young athletes not only made possible the championship season, but also surely bode well for their future success. I'm almost to the end. Whereas, we find it appropriate to acknowledge and applaud the members of the Fairview Middle School Wrestling Team for their outstanding performance this season. Now, therefore, I, Cameron Sexton, Speaker of the House of Representatives of the 113th, this was signed a couple of months ago, General Assembly of the State of Tennessee, at the request of and in conjunction with Representative Lee Reeves, do hereby proclaim that we honor and commend the members and coaches of the Fairview Middle School Wrestling Team upon winning the TMSAA Class A State Championship and extend to them our best wishes for every continued success in all their future endeavors. And this was signed by the Speaker of the House, by me, and by our State Senator Jack Johnson. I want to give you guys a quick hand, and then I'll turn the mic over to our state senator. Give him a hand, folks. And after Senator Johnson speaks, I have a copy for each member of the team, and then I think we'll take a picture, is that right? Great.
Thank you, Representative Reeves and Mayor and Board. It is such a great pleasure to be with you tonight in Fairview. I'm Jack Johnson. I have the honor of representing this amazing community in the Tennessee State Senate. It's always great to be out here. You know, Representative Reeves and I, we do a lot of things, as the Mayor and the Board do, a lot of complicated things, but one of the real perks of the job is getting to honor special people who do special things. And certainly, we are doing that here tonight with these amazing middle schoolers with your incredible accomplishment, with your state championships. So you made Fairview very proud, you made Williamson County very proud, and you made the Tennessee, the state of Tennessee very proud as well. So it is highly appropriate that we're here to honor you and present you with this proclamation tonight. And so I look forward, I think the coach said we may do it again this year, right, Coach? So, so we may, three more times, okay, we're gonna keep winning these state championships. So thank you all and congratulations.
Mayor, would you come down and join us in a picture?
Yes.
And the board, if you're able?
So once again, like, all of our athletes, student athletes, are not able to be here this evening because they all play more than one sport. So I do thank you for coming from your softball game, and I know some play baseball and soccer as well. So thank you to everyone who's watching, and we have proclamations for all those that were not in attendance tonight as well. And once again, thank you to our state senator, Jack Johnson, and state representative, Mr. Lee Reeves.
As much as I know that you would love to stay and listen to this wonderful board meeting, you, you may, we, we can take a little recess if you'd like to go ahead and leave. Absolutely. All right, we'll continue. Item 7D, audit presentation, Blankenship CPA Group. Mr. Tom Darty?
Yes, I would, I would just like to say that we spent a really positive experience working with Blankenship. It's always good to know what you're doing right financially, and it's also good to know what you're doing wrong and what you can improve on. So I, Bob Adams is coming up to, to give a presentation. We had a clean audit, but Ben Knox, our finance director, I turned the keys over to him, and he, he did the majority of the legwork. And also, Thomas Barrett is here as well with Blankenship, but I believe Bob's gonna do the presentation. But anyway, I just, just wanted to let y'all know, it's, we, we've been working with them for a few years now, and we learn something every year. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And just thank you, Mayor and Board, for hosting us tonight. Exciting, exciting to see the wrestling team here, too. I have good news on the audit. There were no findings before I get started. And I know I've been overseeing this audit, I believe, three years now, and I've just seen tremendous improvement in the internal controls and financial reporting over that time, so. And I know it's, it takes a lot of hard work to do that, so just want to commend you for that. So I'll get started, just, just a few, just a few kind of fine print here. Management, this just kind of tells you what, what we do as auditors, what, what the city's responsible for, what we're responsible for. So basically, the city is responsible for fair presentation of the financial statements. They're also just, the city's also responsible for internal controls, the design and the implementation of them. Our role is to come in and evaluate the financial reporting and the internal controls to make sure that they're functioning well enough where we can give a clean opinion. Next slide, please. So just recap, the audit had a clean opinion. It's done under governmental auditing standards. There was no what we would call uniform guidance audit. I'll get into that a little bit more later in the presentation. And as I mentioned earlier, there were no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies in the audit. And, and our audit concluded, I believe, a couple of months ago, and we're just here to present basically a summary of it. Next slide, please. Just a few things in the report. The report, I believe, is about 70 pages long. I won't go over every single page in the report, but if you ever have questions or anything, feel free to ask. And if you think of anything after the meeting, Tom knows how to get ahold of me. Balance sheet wise, the city's very strong financially, $39 million of assets and about $19 million of liabilities, and what's left over is net position. And about $7 million of that is unrestricted. Next slide, please. This slide right here just gives you kind of where the city is, where the city receives its revenue. 42% of that is sales from sales tax-related items, 29% is property tax, and then other taxes are about 10%. And then other sources, which includes basically a whole list of things, such as interest income, fines, permits, et cetera, that's about 17%. And then grants and contributions this past year were about 2%. I anticipate that'll probably go up in the year you're currently in and probably subsequent year. Next slide, please. This just gives you a recap of where you ended up on fund balance, because that's what you budget off of. Your fund balance at the end, this was as of June 30 of '24, it was about almost $16 million, and about 35% of that was unrestricted. And then, and then, of course, we get into several details below that. Unrestricted cash was about 9.3 million. The city spends about a little over $11 million in this past year. So just shy of about, unrestricted cash is just shy of about one year of activity as far as expenses go. That's, that's about average from what we see in other cities that we look at. And income statement wise, the city was pretty close to break even, just, and there was, it was actually more expenses than revenues by $125,000, which is pretty small when you consider that there's almost a $16 million fund balance in place. And one thing that I know that the city really monitors, and, and this is, this takes a lot of work, but overall expenditures had but, um, overall expenditures had positive variances versus the amended budget. So, basically, the budget that you were approving and amending as things transpired during the year, we found no issues, um, you know? Uh, the expenditures were within budget. And, uh, just want to commend, I know Tom oversees that, um, quite a bit. And we had several discussions during the audit about it, so, um, next slide, please. Um, Uniform Guidance Audit, that's a single audit. Uh, basically, if you get more than $750,000 of grants, uh, we're required to do additional compliance work on it. Um, we did not have to do that this year. I anticipate we have to do that next year, maybe the following year. Um, the city does have some ARPA, uh, American Rescue Plan funds, um, that it received a couple of years ago, I believe, uh, the city, uh, for various projects. And the city does have, um, until the end of 2026 to utilize these funds. And I believe y'all have plans in place, uh, to do that. Um, and then, uh, if you want to see more information on the city's retirement plan, that's on page 45 of our audit report. And it shows about, it shows 10-year trend data. Next slide, please. I believe that's, uh, next slide. Um, that's everything I had. Um, I'd be happy to entertain any questions or, um, anything you may have.
No findings, yes, sir.
Any questions from the board? Thank you so much. We appreciate that. And thank you, Tom, and...
I just wanted to say, I forgot to bring them out and put them on, I do have hard copies for each of the commissioners. And I don't know if we've sent you electronic yet, but we can get you electronic as well. And they, they provide those, and, and it, good service.
Thank you, Mr. Blankenship, and thank you to Tom and Ben for working so hard, um, for the last several years to make sure our audit's clean. Thank you. Item number eight, Staff Comments and Monthly Reports. A, City Manager Report, Mr. Darty.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. I did, I had, um, Rachel, uh, give you all the financials of, uh, the previous month. You've got your, your boards of expenditure detail, uh, your budget. And then we've got a, a summary financial statement with revenue detail and, um, 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 summary of the expenditures. And then, got the account balances at the end of January 31st. Uh, any questions on the financials? Even though we're still working on the reporting, uh, I wanted to give you these numbers. And if you have, ever have any questions, feel free to, uh, reach out to Ben or myself. Um, we've had a lot of issues with the driver's license kiosk. As of the moment, it is working. Um, there are, it is limited on what you can do, but it is working. If you have any questions, you can reach out to Richard or, or Rachel. Um, she, uh, they have been, uh, the, the wizards on this, this new piece of equipment that the state has provided us. Um, we also have made some updates on, uh, Channel 19. Again, I cannot take any credit for that. Uh, Richard has, has been the driving force, and we've been working with, um, IT. And, and I believe we, uh, we can make adjustments and updates, um, as we need to, uh, going forward. Um, want to remind everybody that March is the last month for, uh, leaf removal. Um, we, we have bags. If, they have to be put in, um, uh, biodegradable bags at the, um, edge of your property. And, uh, Public Works will pick them up. Um, the chipper service will resume in April. Um, no PC next, uh, week. Uh, it has been moved, uh, because of spring break. Uh, we will have the next PC, uh, public, uh, bleh, can't talk. Um, Planning Commission meeting on March 18th, uh, the following Tuesday. Also wanted to let you know, uh, we, Main Street Fairview Paper, uh, is no longer. Uh, we will have to do all of our city notices in the Fairview Observer, uh, going forward. So, just, that's an update, um, just found out this week. Um, I want to commend our Public Works crew for their, uh, work, uh, during the snow event. Uh, I feel like, uh, there were very few, uh, hiccups during that time. And, uh, they, they worked really, really hard and really well. And just wanted to give them a, uh, a public commendation. And then, um, I believe that's all I have tonight. Uh, I will, any questions, I'll try to answer.
I did want to say one thing. So, um, at City Hall, this is for driver's license. I have a lot of people ask me this. And at the rec center, that's for your registration and tags. Also, if you don't like the picture on your driver's license, it's very inexpensive to come to our kiosk and get your picture retaken. So, that's, that's something that can be done. And if you need the STAR ID, uh, for your driver's license to be able to fly, you will need to go to the DMV. The closest one probably is Dixon, and they're very, they're not very crowded. So, I did want to put that out. Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Darty, do we have any plans for, um, the cleanup of City Hall? The exterior, as far as power washing or anything like that, before our July 3rd?
Uh, we will definitely do some cleanup. We usually do a touch-up on mulch and, and the hedges. And then, we do need, uh, we're looking into power washing and, but I've also got some extra money going in the budget next year for some additional. We've got some pretty significant repair we need to do to City Hall.
Parking lot lines. Thank you, sir. Um, one more question that I had, uh, do we know when the next phase of the paving will be?
I believe they're planning on starting within a couple of weeks. Um, probably go through late May, early June.
Okay.
We should, uh, we're, we're gonna have a historic amount of, uh, resurfacing done. Uh, the, the city has never done this amount before. And, um, I'm excited to have it because we're, we're due.
Absolutely. And, and it's great, and, you know, we've gotten many emails, texts, and phone calls. I'm sure, and I'm not the only one on this board, about that and about, especially Chester, um, just some of the drainage issues that we've had. So, I'm hoping that, um, this, this will alleviate those issues. Um, we've had some homeowners that have spent a lot of money trying to keep the water runoff coming down their driveways. And I've witnessed it, and it was pretty bad. So, I'm hoping that the next phase will alleviate that or at least help with that. So, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
This just reminded me, just jogged my memory, um, just real quick. So, um, I guess I would, I would like to ask if people are having trouble with that kind of water runoff and the issues with the paving, um, who is the appropriate person for them to contact?
It would probably go to, um, Curtis at, at Engineering. And then, depending on his findings, it may go in several directions.
Okay, so they would start with Curtis? Is there a way we can...
They can submit it to the Planning and Engineering Office.
Okay.
To me, Ethan Greer, or to our city engineer, cityengineer@fairview-tn.org is his email. And that would begin the process of determining if it is within the city right-of-way, if it is a, uh, city-caused issue, or if it is a pre-existing issue that's on the property owners.
Thank you. So, those emails and phone numbers are on the website. And they can just reach out to you, Ethan Greer. I think that's where I send everybody, actually. And then I've got just one other quick question. Um, there's a lot of utility work happening with all of the different projects going on. And I've actually had folks reaching out to me. Somebody knocked on my door one day because they saw my car in my driveway. Um, if, if there are not flags that are directing traffic and signs to help people navigate when that sort of thing is happening, and it's, it's not the city, it's utilities, and we don't always know when they're coming, I guess. But what should people do, um, if I, if my car's not in my driveway? Um, what do people, who do they contact?
That would also be me. You're welcome to send them to our office or have them contact our office. Um, all of the utility work, in the case that we spoke about before, um, that utility work was permitted through our office. They have a requirement to have traffic control if they are obstructing the roadway or have a lane closed in the road. In that case, they did not have a, a lane, they had a lane blocked without having proper, uh, traffic control in place. And so, we went out and had them move off of the roadway, which they were able to do. Um, and so, feel free to reach out to Planning and Engineering codes. There's a lot of stuff going on, uh, between AT&amp;T expanding their fiber network, Piedmont Natural Gas expanding their network, uh, United Communications expanding their fiber network. There's a lot of different utility infrastructure that, uh, is coming out into this area with the development and growth that we've seen. And so, it's a great thing for the existing, you know, citizens here. There are a lot of people who are now able to hook up to Piedmont Natural Gas that would have never had that ability prior. But with that comes several challenges of roadway and side of road construction and, uh, and delays. But feel free, if anything seems out of place or, uh, people are parking on the street that shouldn't be, to reach out, and we will have our codes enforcement or engineering discuss with the permit holder what they need to do.
Thank you so much. And, and of course, I don't mind answering those calls, but, um, Ethan Greer can get to them a lot more quickly. And I can testify that he does, and that the city's very responsive to that. So, thank you for that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Greer, do you know what the time limitation is for when they put down their utility flags? As to when they come up if nothing's been done? Because I've gotten a couple of complaints from some homeowners that there's been some utility flags in front of their house for well over a year. So, I, is there like a 90-day period or where they have to retest everything? What can you...
So, there are a couple of different things. If you see a wooden stake with a marker on it, those are survey markers. And those are good for as long as their project exists. If you see a metal flag, colored flag out along the roadway, those are typically placed by Tennessee One Call, 811, Call Before You Dig. They come out and mark the utilities. Those flags are only good for two weeks. Uh, and then, if they don't do their project within those two weeks, they have to call 811 again to have them come out and mark the utilities. And so, if the flag's been there over two weeks and no one's done anything, feel free to remove it. If it's a wooden stake, leave that there, that is a survey marker. Right now, um, there are wooden stakes along Crow Cut marking the right-of-way to make sure that Piedmont Natural Gas stays within where they're supposed to be laying the line. Um, but the small metal flags that are blue or yellow or, uh, red, green, there's several different colors for different utilities. If they're there longer than two weeks, you can pull them up.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Greer, I'm getting, um, many phone calls and, and a video, um, of dump trucks from these developments speeding down Northwest Highway. And that's unacceptable. I, myself, with a citizen, tried to handle some of that, and it didn't go very well. So, I'm not gonna do that again. And I would just appreciate if we could call, maybe whoever, the superintendents of the projects or whatever. But those dump trucks, dump trucks have got to slow down.
We have, uh, spoken with all of the superintendents and the companies, the development and building, building companies in Fairview, and advised them to advise all of their subcontractors who are driving, uh, on our streets to maintain speed limits and operate within the rules of the law. We've also asked for our police department to have additional monitoring throughout areas where development is prevalent, so that they can, uh, ticket those individuals who are violating the speed limit.
And I know, um, we have two officers here. Y'all might pass on the word, because, um, when I tried to speak with them, they said, "We will never get pulled over. We can drive as fast as we want." So, just pass on the word that that was said, and we're not gonna tolerate that. And I know y'all won't either. But Northwest Highway, we might want to take some extra trips down there just to make sure during the day that, you know, this dump truck hitting one vehicle, that's it. So, we appreciate if y'all would kind of just look out for that. And if they are speeding, they can be pulled over and ticketed. You, I mean, y'all know that. So, we just have to protect the citizens, because I'm getting a lot of calls about that. So, thank you. Anyone else?
Well, and, and since, since you mentioned Northwest Highway, Mayor, um, also, the, the parking and the trouble there. So, if anybody else is experiencing that, also, Northwest Highway has just got a high density of development right now. And there's a lot of growing pains happening over there. Um, so, thank you for, for actually addressing that. Um, but then also, there's just, there's gonna be a lot of, of signs of development there. Um, and I think that we've been contacted by folks who are dealing with some development issues. Um, have those been looked at in relation to, um, the Orange Shire development?
Yes, so, our, uh, engineering department has gone out to review that. They're currently in the process of working with the developer to get a resolution. Um, and then, there was also, prior to the, um, concern coming into our office, there was a previous inspection of that site that found it to be deficient in their, uh, erosion protection sediment control program on that development. And so, there were, um, multiple levels that we're working through to try and get a remedy to that solution.
Okay, so, do the property owners of the affected properties get contacted after some sort of review has been done? Or, um, will we get an update or anything?
Once we have a solution in place, the property owners of the affected property will be addressed by me.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Mayor?
Yes.
One more item. Um, I need a recommendation from, from someone to help. So, we've been seeing a lot of mattresses being dumped several places throughout our city. Um, and I, I know that the Williamson County won't accept them. Is there, do we know of any other options?
Well, they do accept them, but there's a fee.
There's a fee?
Yeah. I think it's $20.
Okay.
Because I checked into that, and...
Right.
They do accept with a $20 fee.
But that, that's, that's at the landfill.
It is. It's at the land, oh, yes, it's at the landfill, not at our center down the road.
Okay, thank you.
So, don't throw out your mattresses. Okay. All right, um, item number nine, Consent Agenda. A, minutes from February 6, 2025 Board of Commissioners Work Session. And B, minutes from February 6, 2025 Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Item number nine passes 4-0. Item 10, Old Business. 10A, Annexation, 7740 Cumberland Drive. I will now open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak at the public hearing, um, please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you live in the city or county.
Members of the Commission, my name is Jason Holloman, 4210 Park Avenue. I'm an attorney in Nashville, and I represent a number of the adjacent Ferneville property owners, uh, that are in the county. Um, as, I just will be brief and reiterate what I have said prior public comments. Um, our primary concern in this, uh, request for annexation is that I understand that most of the time, um, things are brought into the, the city on an RS40 base zone, um, which is, in most contexts, a fairly, uh, you know, low-end... you know, low-end level of development. However, because this comes from the county in a five-acre minimum zoning category, this would be essentially a five-fold upzone immediately of this property that would then be eligible for a subdivision. And other residents are going to talk to you about some of the detailed concerns about the development impact on them as adjacent property owners if this is essentially rezoned through annexation. So for that reason, I know there was discussion last time that we appreciated about upcoming changes to your zoning code, to zoning classifications. I understand that now you don't have a five-acre minimum zoning category, but things like that may be on the table. It is also my understanding there are no immediate plans for development of this property. And so with that, we would ask that you either turn this down or defer it until those things can be finalized so that it can be considered in a context that is similar to what it is currently zoned so that the adjacent property owners do not face what is a de facto rezoning of this property. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Dr. Wendell Chris King. I live at 7925 Fernvale Road in Fernvale. I use the doctorate because I have a PhD in environmental engineering from the University of Tennessee and I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state and I'm a numbers guy. Following with what the lawyer, I have basically, a lot of them are just questions to try to understand the total impact of what's going on. But as I see it as an engineer laying this out, the questions are about where are they going to get the water? Where are they going to dispose of the sewage? A big one is how they're going to manage the stormwater, as we were just discussing the problems that come up in that context. And probably the most important to all of us is where are we going to go with all the traffic that's going to be generated? Because as I just pointed out, right now, it's legal for them to occupy the property. Every five acres could have a house. And I think there's 300 acres in the parcel. So there's ample for 50 or 60 houses to be built there right now without coming to Fairview to become part of the city. So the reason must include the possibility of adding more houses there. And so what I did was go through the numbers to figure out what we were talking about, particularly about stormwater. You're going to have 60,000 to 80,000 gallons of water demand and water's limited out there right now. RS40 does not include having water or sewage from the city. Is that correct? I'm going from what I can get from notes, but you guys helped me out.
Sir, this is not a question and answer. We can only listen to your comments.
Okay. So the data I got says RS40 means one per 40,000 square feet, which is about one per acre. It does not include you providing water and not provided sewage treatment. So if they can do one per acre, it's not going to be 350 acres that are developable, but even if 200 acres are developable, that's 200 houses. The impact that you get from this, let's use just stormwater as an example, from what it runs off now to what would run off in a typical subdivision using the American Academy of Engineering Guide for getting the estimating factors, and these are very rough numbers, I'll admit that, because you don't know exactly. But it creates an extra 8.7 million gallons of runoff during the design storm event, which is five and a half inches of rain in a 24-hour period. That's what we use in Williamson County to do our design. That's a tremendous amount of water that it's going to produce. How are you going to manage that water? We're concerned as Fernvale because we all live down the watershed from where all this is being produced. So it has got to run off down into and eventually into the South Harpeth River, which is one of the cleanest rivers that's left, certainly in the county and mostly in this end of the state, in the headwaters of the South Harpeth. It needs to be protected. The cars that will be developed, we can't just look at what will be on the subdivision. They, you were there, ma'am. You listened to the presentation for the county. You presented there for the county where they proposed a commercial activity to go in on the other side of the property that's still owned by the same developer, but that will have a 300-person event center, will have some other commercial activities, will have 42 bedrooms of housing that will produce, if it's a big event and the houses are full, hundreds of cars coming in at one time. Now join that with, if you have 200 houses, how many cars are going to need to come and go? And the only two access points are on the Candy Fork Road and on the Cumberland. That's a tremendous increase in the amount of cars that are going up and down. It really does leave behind the whole idea of Williamson County being proud of its rural heritage. And certainly, the Candy Fork Road is one of the preeminent county heritage roads, dates back to the 1830s when there was a foundry up there that produced iron. It will not handle those kinds of traffic that are possible. Now, I don't know if they're going to build 200 houses, but I know each house produces an excess of 80,000 gallons of runoff compared to when it's a field or a forest. I did the calculations on that. It's a tremendous, tremendous impact, environmental impact. I'll finish by, when we teach environmental engineering, I taught at the United States Military Academy for 14 years, when we teach that, there's this principle, the basic principle. There's a carrying capacity of every property for whether it's a field that you're, you have cows in or whether you're growing corn. And I think it applies equally to people. There's only a certain carrying capacity that that land will support in a sustainable way. And we're getting ready to exceed that if we start putting that many houses up there. He already has the right to build 50 houses. Why do we have to give him the opportunity to build more? He's a great developer, he's an entrepreneur and a fine person in those kind of aspects, but I don't think he appreciates what the rural heritage means to us in Williamson County. Thank you for your time and considerations.
Thank you. Good evening. Our, okay.
Oh, sorry.
You're the applicant, so you can speak during the item. So, yeah, hold on just a second. Okay. Item 10A, number two, Resolution 04-25, a resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owner and to incorporate the same within the boundary of the City of Fairview, Tennessee within, with RS40, single-family residential zoning map 047, parcel 094.00, 7740 Cumberland Drive, 351.27 plus or minus acres. Owner, Richard Spanton, Jr. We'll start with you, Mr. Greer.
The property tonight is Fernvale Springs Farm is submitted for annexation to the City of Fairview. It is contiguous with the city. On the screen, the blue area that you can see in the northwest corner there is the municipal boundary of the City of Fairview. Right where it says Cumberland Drive is also blue, right there underneath that. And that is where they're contiguous with the city. This does fall within our urban growth boundary for the City of Fairview. That was approved and agreed to by all the municipalities in the county, along with the county, and approved by the Board of Commissioners here, accepting that. The Planning Commission recommended that the city annex this property with an eight-to-zero vote with one person absent. And to speak to the RS40 zoning, our zoning ordinance has in 5-105, "All Territory, which may hereafter be annexed to the City of Fairview shall, unless otherwise specified, be zoned RS40 Low Density Residential." The applicant is here to answer any questions tonight and I'm happy to answer anything that you may have.
Thank you. You can step to the podium now. I just want to point out, after investigation, speaking with the applicant of this property, like Mr. Greer said, it's contiguous to the City of Fairview. It is in our urban growth boundary. The Planning Commission voted unanimously in favor of this annexation, as well as our city staff. We can speculate all kinds of things, but the reality of what I've seen and what I've been told is there's a single-family home being built on this property. This is a family farm. Mr. Spanton is raising his children to live off the land and grow responsibly organic gardens. I've seen this for myself. On this property that is asking to be annexed, there is no reason to believe that there would be more than just his single-family home, like I was told, that's what I saw. And if it was to be asked for in the future, it would have to be, this wouldn't be automatic. It would have to be, go before the Planning Commission and this board to be approved. So with that, I will open it up to a motion. And I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from the board?
Mayor?
Yes.
As the representative here for Mr. Spanton, Jr., as of right now, do you have any plans for further development of this property?
No, absolutely not. That's, Mr. Spanton has never been a developer and has no dream or aspiration to be a developer. The sole goal of this property is to raise his 12-year-old son. We're doing that now. It takes a village, as everyone knows, to live organically, work on this regenerative farm, which is also means sustainability as well. I won't get into the, all of the aspects of what it takes to be a regenerative farm, but Mr. Spanton's goal, from the day I met him 15 years ago, was to have a son and they struggled for five years to get pregnant. They have this amazing miracle child. They want to raise him in a wonderful, peaceful community, which is where we are. They researched to find a wonderful spot to raise their son. They've done that. They've invested in a beautiful piece of property and they want to keep it that way. But their goal is to just raise their child and live with their family. And one of those family members is their 92-year-old grandfather. Their parents are in their 70s. None of those folks want to live with 200 houses. They want to live with themselves, raise their son in this great community and be a part of it. That's the sole goal. There will never be a development on that property.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you for asking.
We appreciate that. No, thank you. And we appreciate that, you know, urban growth boundary from Williamson County, it's not something that was taken lightly from Williamson County or from the state of Tennessee or from Fairview as well. You know, as a property owner, it's in your right to do so, especially being in that urban growth boundary. And Fairview is one of the most welcoming cities I've ever been part of, me being an outsider coming in. And this is my forever home, so, and I appreciate what he wants to do with his family and all that. Thank you.
Thank you. This is his forever home. This is where he wants his, the generations to come to call home. That is the goal.
Mayor, I'm glad you got the chance to speak tonight. You didn't get the chance at the first meeting and you've really enlightened everything that I was wanting to ask, so thank you for your.
You're very welcome. It's an absolute pleasure to be here and generally, or genuinely, excuse me, we appreciate all of the time from the city, from the city staff who's recommended the project. Doing their research and the due diligence is not an easy task. And for that, we commend you and thank you for it. I've had several discussions on this project, both as groups within the city and with individuals. And it's been an honor to understand and learn more of the questions that have been asked and why they're being asked. It's really nice to have wonderful representatives like yourselves who care about this community as much as you do, to reach out to myself, members of our team, Mr. Spanton himself, and to get that information. It's an honorable job that you all do and I thank you for it very much. I'm a resident of Fairview, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mayor, thank you. So I first want to thank everybody who's here to speak about this project tonight. One of the things I love about being on the Board of Commissioners is the two sides, or sometimes three or four or five sides to an issue, and that everyone does have an opportunity to speak and to present their position to us. And I can attest to the amount of work and thought that goes into big decisions in something like this. You understand, we are doing a lot of vetting of this kind of an annexation because of what was said before. We are very cognizant of the traffic issues. We're very aware of what could happen bringing in a parcel of land this size. And I mentioned in the last meeting, concerns about the, just about the zoning and about how this would work with where we are currently with our rezoning project. Mr. Greer, I've got a question for you. So this is currently being brought in as an R40, if it's annexed in. Will it be rezoned into a different type of zoning once we pass through the new ordinances? What would it look like afterwards based on where it's located?
It would be, it would have a different nomenclature. It would have different terminology that's used for the zoning, but essentially, the permitted uses on the property would remain the same.
And what about the surrounding properties to this one? I know that we're not, that some of them are not in the city, but what are the contiguous Fairview properties right now?
The contiguous property where it says Cumberland Drive is zoned RS40 currently. The ones that you get up to the very top-left corner of that are all zoned RS15, which is one house per 15,000 square feet. And that is a zoning that existed since the early 2000s when that was rezoned.
Okay. And then, thank you for that. What would it take to get sewer run out here to create a development?
It would be a very expensive endeavor for a developer to pursue sewer. At this point, I believe the closest sewer connection is about three-quarters of a mile or almost a mile to the west on this drawing up Cumberland Drive. Unfortunately, we do not control sewer, so I don't have an exact amount. Water Authority of Dixon County could probably provide a better estimate on that, but it would be a hefty price tag to pay for a developer to extend sewer to that location.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Is there an option, Mr. Greer, for being zoned as agricultural AR50?
Tonight, the application before you is for annexation. And with annexation comes the zoning of RS40. If the property owner at a later date sought to rezon this property to agriculturally zoned or rural zoned, then they are more than welcome to bring that in for their own. But tonight, the application is for annexation with RS40 zoning designation.
So RS40 is an automatic default?
That is correct. That's how our zoning ordinance states, and as I read earlier, in the zoning ordinance 5-105, "All Territory, which may hereafter be annexed to the City of Fairview shall, which may hereafter be annexed to the City of Fairview, shall, unless otherwise specified, be zoned RS 40 low-density residential. There was no other specification from the owner when they applied, and there it would be zoned RS 40, as the application states.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Jones?
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Item 10-2 passes 4-0. Welcome to Fairview. Item 11, New Business 11A, Resolution 05-25, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, approving a storybook trail at Bowie Nature Park. This... okay, so, all right. So Brett, you're going to speak on that. Thank you.
So we are looking into having a storybook trail installed at Bowie. The governor's Early Literacy Foundation partners with the Tennessee State Park Conservancy to install these trails within different state parks, city parks, and other natural areas around Tennessee. They have installed 51 storybook trails across Tennessee, with 24 being in state parks. And I believe Bowie Nature Park would be the perfect location to have something like this. Do you have any questions for me?
Can you tell us a little bit about how a storybook trail works?
Yes. So a storybook trail is put along an existing trail within a park. There will be signs, so 10 for our trail, 10 to 20 signposts with 24 by 32-inch signs displaying pages of a storybook along the trail. They're about a foot and a half high off the ground, so small children can read them as they stroll along and enjoy nature. And we are currently asking the public to choose that storybook for our first trail.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr.?
Commissioner Hall?
You want the public to choose the trail that it's actually put on?
No. So at Bowie, we have the trail pre-selected. It's going to be on the tot trail behind the nature center. It goes around Joanne's outdoor classroom and by the bird line.
I got you. I know it well. Thank you.
Yes, the general... we're asking the public to choose which book goes on to the trail.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you for bringing something like a storybook trail to the agenda tonight. I just really appreciate this. It's refreshing. Thank you.
A pleasure. We're excited for it. I will say, our goal to have this trail completed would be summer of 2025. We do have potential sponsors lined up, and we are in talks with them. Our initial budget is $5,000. We made the budget to where it's kind of a range, so between 10 signs and 20 signs, the high range of that, our initial budget was $5,000. And then we are requesting an additional $5,000 for maintenance upkeep and interchanging different stories throughout the years as well.
Mayor, I'm ready to make an approval.
Yes, sir.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11A passes 4-0.
Wonderful. Thank you all so much. We are very excited to get this project started.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall? Are you sure? Okay. Item 11B, Resolution 06-25, a resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee... Sorry, a resolution of the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners, accepting the city's audit for fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. Mr. Darty?
Thank you, Mayor, Board. This is something that has been done for the last 12 years since I've been here. It's really a formality. I mean, the audit's already been turned in to the state. That's... people probably don't realize it, but we're looked at really close by the state. Tennessee's one of the most frugal compliance states out there. The comptroller has to approve our budget, and then they approve our audit after that budget. So we're looked at pretty strongly for twice a year from the state. So anyway, this is just a formality to say, yes, we accept the auditor's report, and that's really all it is. Thank you.
Any questions? Or let's... I'll entertain a motion.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Now, questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11B passes 4-0. Item 11C, Resolution 07-25, a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the City of Fairview by owner consent with RS 40, single-family residential zoning, and approving a plan of service, 7922 Crowcut Road, 8.66 plus or minus acres, map 021, parcel 017.01. Mr. Greer?
The property that you see on the screen is highlighted in a blue outline is the Holler's property that is for annexation tonight. Again, the blue area that's shaded on the screen is the municipal boundary. This is off... located off of Crowcut Road. The contiguous piece of the City of Fairview is the Bell Haven Project, located off of Elrod Road there. Mr. Holler's submitted to our office that he would like to be annexed. He currently owns 8.66 acres. He is zoned within the county as one house per five acres currently, and expressed an interest in subdividing his property to sell a couple acres to his child to build an additional home on the property. That cannot be done within Williamson County, as it currently states, because you would need five acres per house. And so he is here tonight to represent the project and is asking to be annexed. The Planning Commission forwarded this item to the Board of Commissioners with a positive recommendation with a 7 to 0 vote, with two members absent at their February meeting. You have any questions? Mr. Holler's is here to answer tonight, or I'm also...
Any questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
Mayor?
You have a motion?
I believe you need a motion.
I'm sorry. I guess...
Motion for approval?
Second.
Now, any questions from the board?
No.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. 11C passes 4-0. Item 11D, Resolution 08-25, a resolution adopting the letter of intent and authorizing the city manager and city attorney to prepare a binding contract for purchase of property. Mr. Darty?
Thank you, Mayor, Board. This property is a property right between us and First Bank. We have been leasing this property for a few years now, and we have... Within that lease, we had first right of refusal. I got contacted by Ms. English that she had had an offer and we weren't willing to match. And that's why this is before you. I think this property is really important for our footprint, our campus footprint. I think, you know, it would go a long way with our... Keeping our July 3 event intact. It would also go a long way in creating additional possible parking areas if we do go through with the Justice Center. It would... it would just very... it's a very functional piece of property for the city in a lot of ways. So I've had a attorney, Carter, drafted this letter of intent. Then we'd have to go through a contract process, but this is kind of the first step of saying, yes, we're interested in this piece of property.
Mayor?
Before discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Now, discussion from the board?
Mayor?
Yes.
I think that this would be a great addition to the City of Fairview. It's right outside. I think it's great. It'll be awesome for 3rd of July event and other events that we're going to have as well. But I do have one question, though. So we're making a counteroffer as first right to refusal to whatever this other individual or corporation wanted to purchase that property at. There are two other properties available to the city... for sale right now as well, just across the street from that on our way. Would it behoove us to make an offer on those pieces of property prior to someone else offering something and us having to counter with them if it's millions of dollars? Or possibly lose that and then lose our events that we're going to have and add a wealth of property to City Hall?
I will be bringing a plan for just that in the near future. Of course, that doesn't have anything to do with this one item on the agenda.
Right.
But yes, I think securing our footprint would be very beneficial.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Darty, would purchasing this property in any way change any plans that we have to look at other property like we spoke about in our meeting earlier this evening about the alternate location for the police facility?
No, ma'am. The... this is a totally different situation, a totally different type of transaction, different funds, different... Just they're just not related.
And a follow-up question. If this is the only property in this area that we're able to purchase, and the other properties that Commissioner Buffalini mentioned are not something that we're able to acquire, will it still be useful to own this property?
I believe so, yes. And if it's at the will of the board at some future date, if you deem it's not useful, I don't believe the value will decrease at all. It's right in the middle of everything.
What's the acreage of it, please?
It's just under an acre. And the property owner is here, if you have questions for them. But so far, these feel pretty good about the answers I've given.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11D passes 4-0. Item 11E, Resolution 09-25, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an inter-local agreement between Williamson County, Tennessee, and the City of Fairview, Tennessee to purchase... for the purchase of licenses and subscription fees. And this would be Chief Hughes.
Mayor, Commissioners, this resolution is for us to purchase licenses for... It's called filled-out ops. It's what we... it's by Central Square. Central Square provides the computer aid dispatch system for Williamson County. We currently use it on our MDTs and all of our trucks, all of the big trucks. The county 911 dispatch has requested that everyone move to apparatus dispatching instead of station dispatching. Right now, we get calls and it just comes to Station 31. We kind of decide what truck goes on that. Going forward, once this is all put in place, we'll be dispatches like Engine 31 or Ladder 31. It won't be a station. It'll be the closest available unit. For that, we have some trucks that we don't use, that are very important to our response, but we don't use a lot. They're not the everyday trucks that run like engines in the heavy rescues. It's something like the brush truck, tanker, things like that. But their system has to see them somewhere, their GPS location, to be able to dispatch closest units. So instead of putting MDTs, which are quite a bit expensive, and they have to be replaced probably every three years, three to five years at the same expense, this license is very useful because we can run them off iPads that just have cellular data. They last much longer. And it just seemed a more economical process than going through and putting MDTs in all those trucks that don't go on calls every day, but it still are very useful for what we do.
Can I add one thing on that? I believe, and Chief, you correct me if I'm wrong, but it's just a little over $400 a year, isn't it?
Correct. I think the licenses are $120 per license per year. We're looking for four. We've already purchased the iPads that they'll go on. We needed those for the trucks anyway, but this just is for the license for that software to go on them.
Move to approve.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 11E passes... 4-0. Item 11F. Item 11F, number 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6, will be held in a workshop. We will discuss item number 5, park playground maintenance. And Keith, would you like to come to the podium so that... Keith Paisley is our Parks Director. We're going to have him come to the podium to be able to help with some of the questions. Mr. Buffalini, would you like to... Commissioner Buffalini, would you like to start?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So it's been brought to our attention, and I've been there as well, that our park that we've just spent a lot of money on needs some help right now, needs a lot of attention. And I added this to the agenda because this is something that needs to be bought up, and we need to really discuss this as a city, as a board, as a town, whatever you want to call it at this point. We have a beautiful park, and everybody knows it. It's our gem right now. And there's been some deficiencies, warranty work. We're having some issues right now with the company that did warranty it, that they just sold to another company, and we're just having issues right now. So I would like to add to this is that we get this done because it's getting to springtime. The nice weather's coming. The kids want to go out and play in our playground. We don't want any of them to get hurt. So I'm all for our city using our funds to repair whatever needs to be repaired. So I'm all for our city using our funds to repair whatever needs to be repaired, to do the mulch, to do whatever needs to be done. And I'm only one of this board. So that's why I brought this up, because it's been brought to my attention from citizens and I go there as well. So I don't play on the playground, but this is something that definitely needs to be handled and addressed now. Yeah, absolutely, sir.
So as far as the soft spots, the one email that we received, the climber, we believe that was actually from the old playground. It will be fixed. We've actually ordered the mulch from the company. We have it on hand and they're, I'm waiting on a date from them. So they know it's here. They, they're the ones that ordered it. And that, so that's the rubberized mulch in the soft spots. It also takes care of the entrance and the back way to the sidewalks. And that was our plan the entire time. I am working on getting a quote for mulch, the wood or fiber carpet replacement. I do have their, the company that they used, we originally used, so I am working on that. We have ordered one more mallet. We have replaced four out of the six. I don't want to put the fifth one out there and leave it, the other one missing. We've checked the merry-go-round for debris and greased that. So it's in working order. Replaced the plexiglass on the slides. We had a playground inspection done. And that was organized prior to that email, so it was getting worked on. The findings were the things that we were working on. We know there needs to be mulch brought up to standards. We do have a maintenance, a maintenance plan and costs that it was not in their packet at the company. And talking with the company this week, we found that the gentleman that I always dealt with has now moved to another territory in Tennessee. So I found the correct one to be talking to, to make things happen. So we are moving forward with everything. The playground inspection, like I said, it does, it brings those things to light. And it's, most of that work has already been accomplished.
Excellent. Thank you so much for that. Really appreciate that. I do know that the slide, the plexiglass was replaced?
Yes. There's four. I need two more pieces ordered to get the very top.
Okay, perfect.
The bottom ones are, and I would ask the parents to please keep your children inside the slide and not on top of it.
Right. One other thing was the, so we've addressed the mulch, which, which, great, we really need that bad. The zip line, we're eliminating that? And if so, can we just take that down?
That is correct. The company will remove that for us with a, with a cost. And I'll get with Tom on that. I am working with them. I have their catalog for 2025. And I have the fall zone or zone that that piece covered in the playground and are looking for pieces to go in there. We will work together to find that and we'll, we'll present that to you guys.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Mayor? Hi, Mr. Paisley. So going forward is, I think what I heard you say is that there was already inspections underway. Are those regularly scheduled and they'll be done?
The actual playground inspection is done by a certified playground inspector. And yes, according to this agreement, it's done, it's supposed to be done every year and it will be done every year by them.
Thank you so much.
Since this is just discussion, we won't take a vote on this, but I appreciate all your efforts to get the playground ready for our kids since, like Commissioner Buffalini said, spring's coming and I know there's going to be a lot of children out there excited to play. So thank you for your work. Item number 12, roundtable, mayor and commissioners. Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me. I put it down at the bottom. Okay, we did add 11G. 11G is taking a vote to allow city manager to start the process to secure the property in Lyles for the police training facility. Move for approval?
Motion for approval?
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Item G passes three zero. Item number 12, roundtable, mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Buffalini?
Thank you, Mayor. This has been one of the most positive meetings that we've had, including our workshop prior. So we're going to get all T-shirts made up, very positive. But it's been great. If anyone hasn't seen our workshop, it was very, very positive for a lot of reasons. The last thing we just voted on was to start, our city manager to start looking into a piece of property to relocate our police training facility. And I think it's a great viable option. It's not the end-all, be-all right now. We are, it's going to be work in progress. It's outside of our city limits, so we're also at the mercy of Hickman County over in Lyles. Couple other things I wanted to just touch on, which our city manager touched on. Public Works Department was unbelievable during our second snowmageddon or Snowpalooza, whatever. So kudos to them. Thank you very much. Our planning department, they've been doing great. We've gotten notice to all the developers about cleaning up the streets and it's been better. It's not amazing right now, but it's been a lot better. So thank you to that. Thank you to the Fairview Wrestling Team for coming down. And thank you to our Senator, State Senator Jack Johnson, Representative Lee Reeves for coming here and awarding a proclamation from the state along with the Speaker Sexton to all of our athletes and our middle school. So thank you very much to them. Our July 3 event is going to be awesome. Thank you very much, Mr. Ross, for putting this together. Also looking for those sponsors. Storybook Trail is going to be wild. That's going to be awesome. And I can also see it happening during like Halloween. We could do like scary stories, maybe at night. Run some lights through there, some LED lights. I think it would be pretty cool options, right? I think that would be really cool. Our last meeting was canceled because of the weather, but we did have a milestone here at City Hall or in the city of Fairview. Sharon Hall, congratulations, 25 years with our city. So I didn't want to let that go past. So thank you very much to her. And thank you once again, Fairview. Please stay positive. We want to hear from you, city or county. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Roberts?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening, all the citizens who have spoken. I know, I know that some people are happier than others with decisions tonight and I just really want to continue to have good conversations that we're having. I enjoy those and I learn a lot from them and I hope that everyone feels heard. We can't always make everyone feel happy, but I truly appreciate everything that everyone is saying and to encourage you to keep reaching out to us. As you can see, it really does make a difference. Again, I just want to echo some things, but I think it's important that I say this because I was remiss after the first snowstorm to never say thank you to Mr. Brasher and his team in Public Works. So thank you so much for everything you're doing. I'm so proud of the Fairview Middle School boys. I was proud of the football team. I'm proud of the wrestling team. I'm just so proud of all the things our kids are doing. If you didn't catch Matilda Jr. at the middle school, it was fabulous. And coming up at the high school at the end of this month is tuck everlasting. So if you are a fan of the theater, then I highly recommend getting your tickets before they sell out. Thank you, Mr. Richard Ross, for getting Channel 19 going. I truly appreciate that sometimes all it takes is one person saying, hey, did you know this wasn't working, to see some great action going. Ms. Bree, I'm very excited about that Storybook Trail. I'm far too old to be going down it more than once, but I can promise you I probably will stare at the pictures a lot once it's finally up. I can't wait. Mr. Darty, thank you. Thank you so much for listening to my request and for, for the work that you did in, in seeking that alternative property. And again, I just want to reiterate my gratitude to the board for walking down that path and, and just trusting a process and, and very carefully looking at alternatives. Our city is growing and changing and I love that we're willing to open our minds and look at different alternatives. So just thank you all very much for that.
All right, so it's 8:45. Wow. Look at us. And remember, this weekend is spring forward. So we'll change our clocks and we'll have a lot more light hours, which I love. I hate leaving next door in the dark. So, you know, I'm going to say the same things because I don't, I just have to thank everybody too. And I know we all want to do that. So Todd and his team, Public Works, I mean, they just spend so many hours out there after a storm. And if you see them on the road, just give them a high five or thumbs up because they do such a great job for us and many, many hours making sure our community is taken care of. I appreciate Tom and Ben, the audit. I mean, y'all are rock stars. We've had clean audit for years and you both work so hard. I see you, Ben, out there in the audience. You both work so hard to make sure that we're financially secure. And I was around when, so was Tom, when things weren't, you know, that way. And now that you and Tom are in charge of all of that, it's just, you know, everything's going so well. I just appreciate everything you do. Ethan, you give out your number all the time and you've got a new baby and, you know, you, you're always there for everybody who comes down to your little building down by the fire department. And I appreciate you being concerned about the community and answering questions and letting us forward things to you because sometimes it just helps for them to talk to someone who can reach out to the people, who can make things happen and, and change. So I appreciate that. Richard and Rachel, y'all work so hard on the events and, and our meetings and just making sure that, you know, y'all, y'all wear so many hats. It's not like just one thing that you do. And I appreciate everything you do. And Patrick, you know how I feel about you. Thank you for being our attorney. You're, you do such a wonderful job behind the scenes and answer all of the hard questions that we have for you. Congratulations to the boys and girls on the Fairview Middle School Wrestling Team. What an accomplishment to have Senator Jack Johnson and, and our state representative Lee Reeves come out. What an honor to, you know, present the proclamation. That's something that these children will never forget. So that's really exciting. And we also, you know, like I always say, we want to not just be a board that votes on, you know, subdivisions and annexations. We want to have our community come here and be recognized, our young people, because they are our future. And I was able to, I was asked to speak at the Military Ball for JRTC, the young people at the high school. And, you know, it was a pleasure to meet all of them. They're very smart young men and women, but they, you know, all of these kids are our future. And as we grow older, they're going to be the ones who take over and, and manage, you know, what's going on in our country. So let's all just, you know, wrap around them and, you know, just friend, you know, be, you know, befriend them because, you know, some of them really need that. And it just goes a long way for us to wrap, you know, wrap our arms around these kids and make sure that they have a support system. I'm so excited. You know, I didn't know how it was going to turn out for the, the training facility, but what a win for all of us. It's a real win for all of us. Thank you so much, Tom. You have spent countless hours over the last month to try to find an alternative. And thanks to Todd for reaching out to Jimmy and thanks to Jimmy for being, you know, willing to provide this property and work with the city on that. I think it's going to go a long way for our community and our, our neighbors. Just remember that we have an around-town coffee next Wednesday at 8:30. It's here at City Hall, 8:30 a.m. And I believe that Patty's got Brad Coleman with our property assessor. Brad Coleman will be here to speak to us and answer questions. So that's going to be interesting. We look forward to seeing him. And congratulations to Sharon. What a milestone, 25 years. That's, that's a big deal. And she has just had a smile on her face and been through the ups and downs and she does a great job. So I really appreciate Sharon. And like I always say, let's keep Fairview beautiful and please pick up trash and don't throw out mattresses and, 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 you know, just pick up. So thank you so much. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Thank you for being here, guys.